This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
Okay, well, welcome to our first in a long time East Hampton School Committee Finance Subcommittee on Wednesday, September 13th, starting at 5:00 PM. And we have just a couple of primary things on our agenda here. I didn't print them out for people, but you should have received it. We're just going to start with a presentation and discussion on electric school bus proposal by John Pepe from the East Hampton Energy Committee. And then we're going to go into reviewing the... And I guess we're not going to be able to review the annual, is what you said last night?
Well, I can give you like the end of the year summary.
The preliminary?
But like the more detailed one with like the net school spending and that kind of thing, I gotta wait till I'm done with the end of the year report for that. And I have to reconcile with the city ledger and I'm still waiting for my final sheet from the auditor.
Okay, so we'll just do the review of FY '23 quarter four, which will get us pretty close to also the end of the annual report, but that'll have to wait.
Yeah.
Any other business that people want to put onto the agenda right now as we're under other business or?
I can speak to the negative $330 payroll from last night, but we can do that at the end. We don't need to get in the way of the presentation.
Okay. Okay, so we'll go ahead and start then. So, John, you did send this out in advance, so hopefully people have read it over.
I'm going to cover most of the important stuff anyway. And as far as the PowerPoint, I think everyone got it. I don't know if you got access to it, everyone, but if you're looking at it. I'm not following the PowerPoint, but we might make reference to some of the slides along the way.
Okay.
PowerPoint was for more general background on electric school buses and the position of East Hampton. And my presentation right now is a little more targeted on what the strategy, what strategy options are, where we're at with that. Thanks. So, John Pepe, I live in East Hampton, been here about five years. Energy Advisory Committee about two, no, about two years now. I'm working on this project for about a year and a half. I've used to, before retiring, which is why I have all the time to do this, I used to run the waste management and recycling for UMass Amherst. So, on behalf of the committee, I'm going to rely a bit on this. I've got a lot of factual stuff to throw at you. I'm going to be referring to this constantly. But I'm going to be 10 minutes or less on this, so we have time to discuss and chat and whatever. So, on behalf of the committee, thanks for the invitation to talk here about school bus contracting and electrification. Hoping you guys have a chance to review some of the background docs on the topic and out of respect for your workload and the time I'm allotted, I'm going to keep it, as I said, to about 10 minutes. Let me clarify and emphasize that we don't propose that you take this on this challenge alone, the EAC. The EAC is ready to provide support and research as needed. As I said, for 18 months, we've been gathering information, analyzing data, including discussions with the previous district leadership and NIC, as well as dozens of outside practitioners. Our goals, and we hope yours as well, are the following. One, to remove a documented health risk for our students, employees, and community, that is diesel engine exhaust. Two, to address long-term district cost containment needs, saving money that may then be redirected from merely transporting students to teaching them. And three, to replace the 100-year-old technology that's dirty, greenhouse gas spewing, and vulnerable to the roller coaster ride that is the world oil market. But what will it take, take us to get there? I think the answer is patience, determination, and some creativity. It's not going to, it's not going to happen overnight. As you know, East Hampton contracts out for transportation services to our students. It has as much as four years remaining on its almost new contract with Durham School Services. And I presume, and correct me if I'm wrong, that the district is not now prepared to take on ownership of school bus operations, including bus procurement, maintenance, staffing, and system management. That's what Lower Pioneer Valley Educational Collaborative does, but that's a big group down there. On paper, we could simply secure electric school bus grants and lease the buses back to our contractor to operate. But my judgment from what I, the research I've done and talking to people is that this would be highly improbable, given our small size and both the eligibility and prioritization criteria that EPA has with their clean bus, school bus grant program, as it now stands anyway. It is possible for East Hampton to instead lease electric school buses and charging equipment from third parties, such as a company called Highland Electric, for about the price that we now pay for bus transportation services, inclusive of the cost of bus drivers and system management. But then we still must, then we would still have to hire staff and operate the fleet or work it out an agreement to turn it over to our contractor, to a willing contractor, whether it's a current contractor or not. In this case, the federal grant funds are funneled through a third-party owner on our behalf, such as Highland Electric. And the third-party retains the vehicle-to-grid revenue rights, so buses can charge back into the grid and they're not being used. And you, and that's a source of revenue for whoever owns the buses. Can be substantial, I guess, if they time it with peak demand and where the utility has to pay a lot of money for power supply during peak demand times. That third-party owner gets that revenue and also associated asset depreciation, tax benefits that private companies can do, but we don't have the access to that if we own it. The problem here is, is that all on our own, we're small potatoes. And North Hampton, North Hampton had been courting Highland Electric, according to a member of the North Hampton School Committee that I've been talking to. Yet Highland seemed to eventually lose interest in them and it just kind of faded. I think they, not sure, but I think they're after the big contracts. And they, they're working with the Montgomery County, Maryland School District, which is, I don't know, just millions of people down there. I'm not quite sure how many in that county, but...
Yeah, there's only 14 school districts in Maryland.
Yeah, and that's probably as big as all the rest of them put together, huh? All right, so it appears to us at the EAC that if East Hampton is to avoid being the last adopter and doing so under duress, possibly state or federal mandates at some point, then we must bulk up and increase our negotiating power, both in the private market for school transportation services and in the public market for government grants and subsidies. They're both kind of, you know, markets of sorts. And having some bulk and negotiation will help with our negotiating power. We need to work with similarly situated and ideally geographically contiguous districts. That's why EAC reached out for information and indications of interest to our neighbors, East Hampton, I mean North Hampton, Hampshire Regional, and the Holyoke Public Schools. I just got off the phone today with the new, I don't know if he's your counterpart, school business manager at Holyoke, Sean Mangano? But he, if I pronounce it right, he just left Amherst. He'd been with Amherst for 15 years. So he'd been there in your capacity kind of during the, yeah, during the early days of their piloting an electric bus over there. And so he's got some good background on it. So I just talked with him today and it was encouraging. It's also why we have worked to gather information from local consortiums of school districts that have had experience conducting regional, multi-district school transportation bids. There's several of them. As of today, even as round one of the EPA's Clean School Bus Rebate Program resulted in 2,500 bus orders, school buses, electric school buses still cost $350,000 to $400,000 a piece. The round-two grant criteria targeted, and that's essentially over. They haven't announced them, but the grant applications had to begin earlier in the summer. That targeted environmental justice districts, tribal jurisdictions, and very rural districts. The technical classification is R-42, R-43. And we're not in that classification. And it required a minimum, minimum order 15 buses. So grant rules require that districts or their contractors will retire a diesel or a gas bus for every electric bus they are awarded. And the bus to be retired had to be a 2010 or older model. You just don't throw out a 2020 or 2018 bus that you've put money into, where the contractor's thinking is probably similar. So that's a policy that limits the number of buses a district or a contractor can swap out for electric buses in the short run. So in all likelihood, it will, a necessity, be a gradual process to clean up our school bus fleets. Fall River was awarded 12 in round one. Fall River School District was awarded 12 electric school buses. And they'll apply for 12 more in one of the next coming rounds, according to this consultant that's working for them that I've been talking with, Richard Labrie. He's pretty knowledgeable about that stuff. Lower Pioneer Valley was awarded 20, educational consortium was awarded 25 buses, but they own and operate a fleet of 240 buses and vans. So that's not getting them over the hump just that grant. Montgomery County already mentioned they had an award for 25 buses. They are working through a lease, a lease with Highland Electric. So Highland Electric would own those buses. But they plan to phase out these buses over a period of four years. And I don't think that's possibly accomplished with just federal grants. They're not going to get all that. That's Highland, Highland finding capital investment and taking advantage of tax breaks and vehicle-to-grid revenue and other, and the discount. And they get the money from the federal government when they purchase the buses. But they just provide them to Montgomery School District. So, East Hampton has one main pathway to secure enough federal funding to get us started, say for an award of three to five buses maybe. We would work in partnership with our transportation contractor, Durham, and apply for an EPA award as part of a larger group. North Hampton, as I said, and Hampshire Regional, logical partners have indicated some interest. Both have applied unsuccessfully for round one clean school bus grants on their own, as individual communities, well, or as individual districts, I should say. Holyoke might be an ideal partner in such an effort, adding population to the application, environmental justice criteria, and completing a large contiguous service area that's all served by Durham, from the hill towns down through here in North Hampton, Southampton, across the mountain to Holyoke. And parenthetically, the most recent grant round, if EPA grant program is to award a contract, award buses to a contractor, which is actually done through the manufacturer, they get a point-of-sale discount. The, like Durham buys from Navistar or somebody, a big Bluebird, a big distributor of buses. The money goes to the bus manufacturer and they give a discount to the bus contractor. And that costs, they have to have a contract with the community for at least five years in order to get that. And those cost savings are then passed on to us in the contract price. So it's probably unrealistic to expect that the entire bus fleet transporting our children will be financed by federal grants ever. So the full transition to electric school buses, both here and nationally, will rely on industry-developing economies of scale in production, as well as technological advances in bus and battery manufacturing in order to steadily and significantly lower purchase prices. We've seen such economies of scale and technical advances followed by significant price drops in a number of sectors, solar, photovoltaics, electric vehicles and batteries. They're all coming down and some of them kind of precipitate. But we can get started by applying for grants, possibly with, but much better, possibly without, I should say, but much better with our neighboring districts and in partnership with our transportation contractor. Finally, as a community of limited means and competing demands for limited resources and as a school district with strained and finite budget, it appears that working regionally in a multi-district consortium is the road to increasing bid competition and constraining future transportation cost increases. There's some evidence to support this in the experiences of the district consortiums that I've mentioned. Actually, I didn't really, I did mention who they were. One was Northern Franklin County, anchored by Franklin Technical High School, working with several other school districts in Northern Franklin County. They got help from Franklin County Council of Governments. Another was two Southern Berkshire school districts put out a joint bid. And the other one I spoke with briefly, I don't have that much information on them, was Belchertown, Wareham, and Randy, did a multi-district bid process. And there's some evidence for sure that, at least in one of the cases, they got two bidders on their contracts, or three bidders, I think, in one year. And the cost savings is a little hard to tell, because you don't know where it's going to go up, what it would have gone up from inflation anyway. Would it have been higher, a higher cost increase if you were just bidding on your own? There's complexities to that, but we can get some help on that. So to wrap up, I'll reemphasize that there's dual complementary purposes advanced by working regionally on these challenges. One, cost containment and competition and bidding. And two, gaining a competitive edge and leverage with which to move Durham School Services in our direction and then to move clean school bus money from Washington here. There's little cost and little risk to trying, and while the stakes for our kids and our climate are quite high. So that's all I have to tell you. Thanks for listening.
Thank you very much.
Ask me whenever you'd like.
I guess I would first actually like to turn it over to you, since you asked for this to come to the Finance Committee. So is there a particular outcome that you were looking for from the Finance Committee at this point?
No, just that, it's just like a point of order that usually presentations would go to the Subcommittee first and then be brought out by the chair of the Subcommittee to the larger committee. So it was just more of a point of order than a long presentation to the school committee. It's to go to the Subcommittee first and then have the chair report that out to the larger committee.
Makes sense to me.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Just wanted to check if there was something in particular.
No, no.
Questions?
I have questions. Want to go first? Do you have questions?
Well, I would just say...
You want to start?
No, I would just say that...
Were you afraid I was going to say that? Buy them all?
Yeah, exactly. I don't know, I mean, the depth to which this conversation needs to be had, I think is, doesn't need to be super deep, I guess is the piece that I would put this. Because like you're saying, John, there's a lot of work to be done. It's about partnerships, it's about going down that route of development. So getting too deep in the weeds with questions, I just suggest we limit that.
I won't get too deep in the weeds, I promise.
We go for it, it'd be a question.
All right, so I had two sort of things that I've been thinking about as I read through this before. And I think you were, you kind of answered this a little bit for me, but pretend I'm a third grader. I'm sorry, I'm a kindergarten, to explain it again. So you went through, there's sort of these, the two paths that seem viable are the one where we join with other districts or where we do the lease-back program with the city. That's sort of path number three. That's a variant of number two. Will you remind me why that's not as good, or like, you don't do it deep into it, but why is that not as...
Attractive?
Yeah, as...
Okay. First, there's a distinction between whether our target is just getting more bids on our bus contracts and better competition, or the focus is how to get, you know, who cares about the bidding? Let's just get our electric buses somewhere.
Okay.
With electric buses, well, probably the first place is to start with increasing competition for bidding. I think that's a lot, why a lot of the school districts have done it, is to get more bids, because they feel held hostage by their transportation contractor and there seems to be a comfortable lack of competition. And you stay in your territory and I stay in mine, and I don't know what you call that, but it doesn't serve the public interest too well. But so, increasing competition and hopefully it's attractive, because the contractors can achieve their own economy of scale. You know, when they're ordering buses for the districts or ordering fuel or stationing their depots, that they can get some economies of scale and that would be reflected in their prices. I'm not sure about that. There's, like I said, there's some evidence. So that's a reason to partner up with other communities on that stuff. But coincidentally, it piggybacks, I mean, the electric bus objective piggybacks on that in a sense too, because there's just, we're not, right now, unless the economics of producing electric school buses change very quickly, we are not in a position to pay for them. You are not, we are not in a position to pay for them, out of pocket. In the long run, even now, there's arguments, analyses have been done that suggest that they are almost equal in long-term cost, because you're not paying as much maintenance, you're not paying for, you know, for diesel fuel.
For fuel.
Yeah, but we can't pay for them on our own. And the only way that it seems like to be competitive and to meet the criteria from this current federal grant program for clean and zero-emission buses is to, is to be bigger or more, or poorer, or more rural. We can't change the rural, we can't change the, you know, our income levels. I mean, we're not a rich community either, but we're not hitting those, they're called SAPE category classifications on low income. I've looked at those. We had, we had, actually, we had, one of the things was hitting 20% of your student body was, we'd been considered poverty and we were a little bit under that or something. And so...
The other thing I would add to that, to that piece too, is just that the infrastructure of charging those buses is significant.
Yeah.
And that is not something that we have in any kind of easy way.
Not we're getting into that versus...
Right.
If that holds true, if we're thinking, you know, what's relevant in the next five, 10 years, but also down the road, it's still, if you look far out, this is still the...
Well, I don't know what's going to be there in terms of, no one knows what's going to be there.
No one's critical of all?
Especially with political changes, yeah, we'd have, in terms of what support they would be at the federal level for these kind of programs going forward. I mean, everyone's under the gun from their own objectives of zeroing out carbon emissions by 2050, whether it's federal or state government. And so maybe at some point they'll say, well, we can either threaten cities and towns or we can give them money to get there, and maybe it'll continue. But right now, it's a five-year program, ends in 2026. If, we can't afford it now without it, so we have to go with that. What happens after that, the only hope we have is that there's enough momentum in that direction, enough capital being, you know, invested and contracts out there that, that industry expands and gets economies of scale in production like that, with solar panels. And the price comes down enough so that we don't rely on the federal money so much. I don't know if that...
Yeah, no, that makes sense.
But every angle I've looked at, there were two rounds of grant, there was a lottery round one, these grant proposals. There were still prioritization, eligibility and prioritization criteria, but it was a lottery. So there's some communities that are sitting on a list that they were prioritized, but they lost the lottery. So it's like a two-step thing.
Yeah.
The next round was competitive, this current round was not a lottery, it's a competitive grant process. And they all have minimum number, well, the first one didn't have a minimum number of buses to order. The one they're currently doing, you have to order 15 if you're a municipal owner, if you're running the program, or a bus contractor like Durham would have to order 25. So that's another reason, if we work with them, to pull together three or four districts. And I think that might be feasible, so.
Yeah, I think it makes really good sense. And the reason I bring that up and sort of clarified here, that we have on record, I think there's a really nice, I don't know, like path forward for us to, rather than explaining all of those options in the regular school committee meeting, we can just say, you know, it really seems to make the most sense based on the research that we go with this joint versus...
Nick, thanks.
Yeah, I mean, I just think, I think it makes really good sense and I'm super interested. I have one more question for you, but Nick, if you want to jump in.
I mean, I think increasing competition regarding bids is intertwined with the electrification process, because if, you know, if customers want to increase pressure on vendors to start electrifying their fleets and there's more competition out there, it's going to motivate said vendors to be in that direction. But when you're kind of tied to one vendor, as you mentioned, there's not as much pressure there on their behalf to do that, you know? So I think the two are...
I'm not sure how much, I mean, because of, again, the front costs of electric buses is so high, I don't quite see how we're going to suddenly find more competitors out there that are going to want to get into that market and, you know, spend millions of dollars on buses to then try to win those bids. So I think that, I don't know if that's necessarily a piece to it from the way I look at it, but I think collaboration is going to help, is going to help move it. I don't know if it's going to create more competition, but...
Well, they can tap the money. I mean, those contractors can tap into the money to reduce the upfront costs through the manufacturer. Like that point-of-sale discount I was describing, Durham goes to Bluebird or Thomasville distributor dealer. And they've got a contract with these four districts down here. And they apply together. Thomas receives the funds, if it's awarded, Thomas receives the funds, discounts the price of the bus by whatever the grant was. Right now, they're almost the full price of the bus. And passes that through Durham in the form of, oh, our bus costs, our bus prices didn't go up on our contract, but now we have electric buses. I mean, that's the, that's a pathway. We'll guarantee it's going to happen, but yeah, I agree, they wouldn't do it. I, Richard Labrie, this guy who's been consulting with a lot of these districts on group bids, and I know he's the one who's been hired by Fall River to implement their program with their bus grant, the new electric bus grant. He said right now, if you just put that in a contract, he disagreed with our prior, your predecessor, that it would scare them off if you had an alternate. If you just had a bid, like a year ago, we put an alternate in and said, okay, here's the regular price, what would you charge us with electric bus? He didn't think that would scare them off, but he said your price would come back about, you know, $800 a bus instead of a day, bus per day versus 400 or 500 what we were paying.
Well, yeah, if there's no money coming to the vendor to get them going along with that process, that cost is going to get passed right along to the customer.
Yep.
You know, both regular ed and specialized transportation.
So there's a lot of school business managers that I've encountered who would probably, you know, the people who'd be doing the work to investigate the options and analyze them, your counterparts that are new. You're a seasoned veteran here after a year of...
I don't know about that.
Compared to the Hampshire Regional guy, I called him Mickey, I can't remember his last...
He came from Holyoke, though.
Yeah, he knew you.
Yeah.
Yeah, he's got background, but he just got on the ground. And the guy, Sean Mangano, just got on the ground at Holyoke six days ago. And I called him today, yesterday. They're just trying to figure out which, which direction is up right now. And so it might take a month or so before they'd be willing to sit down and have a discussion about stuff. But I think there's interest, some interest.
When is the bus contract with Durham, this start line?
It just started. We're in our second year now, so we have next year and then we have a potential fourth and fifth add-on year if we choose to exercise that option.
But we don't have to.
We don't have, no.
But there's no competition of the...
Right, right.
Yeah.
I think it's great.
I think it appears to be, you know, a certain agreement amongst transportation people that this is my area and this is, and so you don't come into my area. And they rarely do follow that for each other, right? They all know each other and they do claim certain, certain areas. So, you know, I'd be surprised if adding this would attract somebody else, because it's pretty well-established whose area is whose.
Could it be possible, after this contract is finished, to put as an alternate some kind of a discount or more points on your bid if you were using electric vehicles?
Yeah, you could write that in the specs, absolutely. And I mean, I think it'll say more and more, just doing that.
We do that a lot with our wage theft. So we put it in and it's, you know, now all of the contractors working time are compliant. It only took like a year and a half. But maybe to get that language into the procurement to the RFP. And is Durham doing all of our transportation and doing specialized too?
Now Vanpool does.
Vanpool, yeah. I mean, I see, I mean, they're not big school buses, but I see that the transition to electric vehicles as far as student transportation would likely start on like a Vanpool, a smaller...
Vanpool actually, I believe, does have a couple of electric vehicles. Like they're not, there's not a ton of them out there, but they're...
Because they would charge us on Level 2 overnight. But, I mean, I can't even imagine what a, a school bus would charge on.
Three.
A three?
Yeah.
They'll charge on a three? Do you see her...
Well, if you want it, if you want it within a week of when you plug it in, I think it's got to be a fast charger. I mean, you want to have some fast chargers around. You can charge them on Level 2s, but, yeah. But what you're saying is also supported by Sean Mangano from Holyoke, who used to be in Amherst, that he was, that's one of the... in Amherst, that he was, that's one of the final things he said to me is that there's, there's all these vans and it seemed like it would be a lot easier. They don't exist right now, or actually, he thought they didn't exist. I don't know, we've heard of some, but at least not en masse, that they're out there. But electric vans should be easier to produce without these factors of three in price, like they're three times as expensive for an electric bus as a diesel bus. But you'd think that, he felt that with vans, you could probably do it, but not so much of a price differential. And that there are so many out there. I mean, how much different are they than some of the pickup trucks and stuff that are being electrified right now? It's worth looking into.
I, yeah, I mean, I have nothing to do, you guys do your own procurement, but I mean, it would suggest the language. And having our, just contracted with Durham, you know, I'm sure Durham's not going to reopen the contract if we ask them to put this language in it, just so it, you know. But I do think it's a, I mean, we're, we're about to order dump truck and an electric fire, not a ladder. And we won't get it until 2028.
Oh, yeah, the lead time on these things right now too.
Right, so say we had the money?
Yeah.
I mean.
Yeah.
Buses are, I think from the time of a purchase order now, or something like in a year and a half range, maybe a little rest.
We're still waiting for an ambulance and a truck for more than two years that we're supposed to get there.
Even diesel vehicles, like when I started in Northampton, there was a 7D van ordered before I got there that didn't arrive until after I left. I literally did a year without that thing. And that was a diesel vehicle, probably the last one they'll buy.
Yeah, I mean, we're starting with the bigger trucks, the bigger things, not the smaller things, because we're not competing against, like, I don't know, Ford Lightning trucks, which I never buy, but I agree wants one. Like, we're not buying 50 of them, we're buying three. You know, we could get by with two, except there are three departments. So we'll see how that goes. At least in council system. But, yeah, I mean, I, we're going for, it's just a less, I mean, it's still a long wait time, but the bigger ones, because not as many people are switching over their vehicles. But I like the idea. I mean, the other, I mean, you guys have probably talked about the, creating your own regional transportation district, there are incentives that the state will give you, but I don't know how, they always underfund, right? I mean, it's like you get involved and then all of a sudden you read, it's like, oh, we only got funding 20% for like operations and.
Is that, is that public transportation, or is it also applied somehow to school, school buses, school transportation?
You're a region.
Like a PBTA.
That's different than a regional transit.
Okay.
Yeah, like, I forget the, frankly, I mean, there's like regional.
Transportation.
Yeah.
Or something.
But you have to, you have to bus every kid in a regional district, so there is state reimbursement. They claim they fund at like 90% every year.
Yeah.
Do we get any?
No, because we're not regional, are we?
I mean, that's why Hampshire Region's getting, I saw it in their budget.
Yep.
Can I ask a question? How is it that the Lower Pioneer Valley Consortium is in charge of busing for their, for all the people in their consortium? How did that come about? Because we're in a huge consortium. It's like one of the, it looks like it's one of the biggest ones there is. It's a, it seems like we could have a lot of power if we could get the, our consortium involved in providing public, the bus transportation. I'm just curious how that.
Are you referring to the Collaborative of Educational Services?
Isn't that the same as, as our Hampshire?
The old name, the new name for the Hampshire Education Collaborative?
Oh, it has a new name.
It got, it's changed, I guess.
Yeah, I believe.
We put up a call-in to them and they're supposed to be checking into whether they could work with us.
I'm just curious why, why we have our own small little busing as opposed to this, these communities that all, when did that happen and why did it happen? I'm just.
It's not easy to put it together.
And they bring in way more revenue, the Lower Pioneer Valley Educational Collaborative, because they run the Career Tech Vocational School for seven districts that don't have, well, actually ours, so eight districts that, you know, don't have vocational programming. So, I mean, we're paying over a million dollars a year just to send some, you know, probably about 41 or so high school students to that program. You multiply that by the seven other districts, so like LPVAC, as I call them affectionately, they, they've, they just, they've bought buses over the years. Like, they just decided to get into the transportation market for their member districts.
That's what I'm curious about, about why they, they just, they decided to do that, but it didn't happen around here, just.
I think it's a revenue thing, honestly. I mean, LPVAC does bring in quite a bit of revenue.
It doesn't, how many districts totally use LPVAC? I mean.
I think all seven of their member districts do, I mean.
For transportation, at least.
You know, Agawam, West Springfield, Wilbraham.
Yeah, I was just.
Not sure about Long Meadow and East Long Meadow. I think Ludlow uses them. So like, they're, you know, and I mean, the districts have to pay for that too. I mean, they're paying probably comparable to what we are to Durham, to them to do that. But it's, you know, it's just, I guess it's a different setup than CES is, I guess is the short answer. I mean, if they wanted to get into the transportation market, you know, by all means, I'd work on it.
I mean, so far they, I talked to this guy Henning over there, who's a procurement guy, and he apparently, I don't know if you know him, but he just does commodities. They don't do service contracts on that, whenever they commodity so far. But he was going to go check with his leadership board or whatever over there about whether that was conceivable or not. So, does this feel like something you would recommend to the full committee? This, the way this thing was worded, passed out by email, the recommendation? You didn't get that?
I don't generally recommend anything.
Huh?
I said, I don't generally, it's not that I don't want to recommend it, I think it's a point-of-order thing. I mean, I just don't usually make recommendations to the school committee.
I meant the subcommittee recommending to the full.
Oh, okay, I thought you were, you were looking.
No, no, sorry.
I know, I think you, I was, I was dying to see what you were going to say.
I was like.
Sorry, Nick, I didn't mean to. Nick's not the guy to ask when you want to spend money.
I was looking the wrong way. Yeah.
So, so to me, I'm not sure what the recommendation exactly would be, because it seems like there are so many, a lot more time needs to go by to really check in and see exactly how that is working out with the electric buses. And we still have a contract currently with Durham, so I'm just not sure, like, what would the exact recommendation be?
Did you read the one that I proposed?
Yeah, I mean, I'm seeing, I've seen that there's two primary choices, right? So one choice is a small minor review and look to update our contract language for the next contract in a way that would add points to the RFP to move them in a direction. The likelihood that's going to create a whole lot of momentum is pretty darn, pretty darn small. So, but it's also an easy fix, right? The second most likely piece that would actually have some real weight out of this is getting involved with sort of partnerships and sort of potentially developing a regional transportation group, but that's a huge undertaking, right? I mean, that's what you're talking about, John, right? Is working with these partners' districts.
Not like, not like Lower Pioneer Valley where they joint, they could together own their buses and run the program and staff. This is just as three or four other areas of the, do you want, can I finish that?
No, yeah, please, go ahead. No, 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 I'll just.
Other than three or four other regions, Southern Berkshires, Belcher Town, where Ramby, Northern Franklin, they just sat down and said, coordinated on, they didn't even have to change their, well, they had to figure out some language differences about a contract that would serve them all. There's different ways to do it so that if they accept the lowest bid that affects everybody, or they can carve out best bid for this town, this district versus that district.
Right.
I don't think, especially when you have some help, like they had Franklin County Council of Governments helping, that that's a, talking about a huge investment of time, or something like that. And putting together school grant, a bus grant application, sit together and get your district information together and your proposal and what you're looking for. And I, I mean, that's some work, but we're not talking about Herculean, Herculean tasks.
But isn't the proposal you put forth, I'm sorry?
No.
Chair.
Nice to meet you. Just a quick question. So the thing that you're, yeah, the thing you're talking about in terms of, do we, will we adopt this recommendation, are these three points, right, which is, which is less toward than what we're even saying, like, we're definitely going to pursue this thing. The recommendations are that we pass a resolution, right, to electra, to achieve electrification of the school bus by 2030. I, I think that's great. I, I would bring that forth. My colleagues might disagree, but that's.
By 2030?
By 2030. So this, so they, he sent us three recommendations, wondering if these are the things. Yeah, so it's that, it's a resolution. We could debate the language of it, maybe, in the larger school committee, but.
Yeah, you know, 2035 isn't the end of the world either.
Right.
You know, you do what you can.
Yeah, assign a person or a subcommittee to start looking into this. I, I would be happy to recommend and adopt that, and would definitely volunteer to be on that committee. And then, that is a district, we approach the contractor and Durham, the current contractor, and make it our intention zone. Those are the three things that he's asking for, recommend. To me, that seems very reasonable. We're not committing to anything. We're just saying, we're bringing this to the full school committee and saying, let's start looking into this seriously with the subcommittee.
It's initiating a process.
So the, the thing that I don't agree on it is, you're, seems like you're saying you're going to electrify the whole fleet by 2030. And we really don't know where, where we're going on that. I, I think that, because that, let's just say Durham says, we're not electrifying our fleet by 2030, then how are you going to transport your kids? It isn't, I just feel it's too strong. In my opinion, it's too strong a statement, and it needs to be adjusted.
Can we look at other, how, is there districts who are in the process of doing that? Maybe this is the language they use, but I'm guessing that a resolution along this path, because there's so much out of control of the school committee and a district, would be that this is our goal. This is what we're working towards, whether or not it's 2030 or 2035. This is what we're doing over the next X number of years. That's how I'm interpreting it, and maybe it requires looking at some districts that have done this and seeing what their language is. But I think that's an important commitment to make, given that the world is literally flooding and on fire and I think we had to come out on the front end of that, as a, what are our priorities in the district?
So I agree with your assessment of where we're at as a world right now. Whether or not our district can say, we're going to take on the brunt of this, as if electrifying our school buses is going to suddenly change any of that, is not my perspective on this. So I do think though, I think that we're getting a little too stuck on number one, because I don't think that that's us making a statement like that, aspirational or locking us in, is not what my perspective is the first step. The first step is getting more information, is partnering and having collaboration and conversation. We can move this forward and have a positive direction without making some like stand or statement that's going to suddenly lock us in and have us in trouble in 2030 because we don't have the buses, because we don't actually own any of our buses, right?
Unless we're teaching them to get in trouble. It's just stating the intent of the committee. And that's why I'm talking about looking at the wording. We're not going to set us, ourselves up for getting in trouble. But to declare, I think there, that words matter. And we say, this is what our intent is in the district and where we're headed, is what we're working on. I think it matters.
So, so the people that I, that I know that work in the electric industry keep telling me that we're not ready, the grid is not ready to go forward with some of these proposals similar to this one, that's being said, to actually electrify and be able to charge all the, this is like a plan, but that's, we're making plans without really having, making sure that the grid is ready to carry it. So that's why when I, we want to make a resolution, but to me, I would just think it should be explore, committing the district, because we don't have all the facts. It's hard to make a resolution when we don't have all the facts. That's.
And I would even put forward, this is the finance committee, we don't make.
No, we wouldn't.
Any policy recommendations.
No, no, no. I think your question was just, would we bring this forward? Would we be willing to recommend this to the full, I'll put me over there, like, that's the full group, beyond the wall. You know, we're out there.
Would that then get referred to the policy subcommittee before a resolution is made up though? Like, would it then get kicked to another subcommittee, I guess is my.
Or just take resolution out of it.
I don't know.
I don't have an answer to that. But I do have a question. So does that sound like, like when you were doing this research and putting this stuff together, are you also hearing that we're not ready, that the district's not ready for it?
Well, it's a concern economy-wide, it's just, you know, nationally, that there have to be a lot of improvements to transition, to transmission facilities. There's got to be chargers placed all over the place, one, level two and three chargers placed all over the place to make vehicle owners confident that they can get from one place to another. But there's a lot going on. There's, there's a lot going on in that direction. There's a lot of money being invested in it. And one of the things that happens is that, you know, when, is that, actually utilities are coming along, coming around pretty well on it from what I can tell, but they're, they just got rid of the, you probably heard this, the demand charges, after some pressure from public and the DPU, they got rid of demand charges on the chargers, the electric vehicle chargers, that were making it onerous for, you know, people who aren't charging their customers enough or any. Anyway, so there's, there's a lot going on. Yeah, there's, there's challenges, but there's a lot of people working on, a lot of money being put into it and a lot at stake if, if, if we don't achieve those goals. So you have to have some hope that, I mean, part of the, what we need for a bus fleet here is our own chargers. And that's part of the grant program, is getting funding for your own level one chargers and level two chargers for your buses. So you're not going to go and get a bus and have a place to plug it in and charge it. Some of the other newer adopters, early adopters on electric buses have to worry about where they're going to get their buses maintained, because there weren't enough mechanics yet in the right places who knew how to maintain those buses. But there's a lot of work going on in preparing the ground for it. And we're not, we're not the, especially since we didn't apply in these early two rounds of grants, there's going to be 200, 300 other school districts out there around the country that are, you know, are navigating the path for us, or preparing the way for us.
Another concern is the life of the vehicles up here with all the roads south and stuff in the winter, you know, it's vehicles getting eaten.
Is it any different than diesel versus electric bus?
Well, no, I know that, but I, you know, people like you referenced Montgomery County, Alabama, they aren't dealing with that down there, you know. But those vehicles last a lot longer than they do up here, which I think may make some vendors up here in the Northeast more hesitant than vendors in other places, because they're, they're just, they don't know what's going to happen to the vehicle over time as roads south just gets kicked in there.
So what I would say though, before, I mean, again, I don't, I don't think it's to go too far into the weeds at this point. I think that it is certainly something that we want to dig deeper into. And I think that, that we can certainly take it from this committee and put it to the larger committee as an educational piece. And as a piece that would then have us go do additional research and connect to some of the different contacts that you already have made. And I think that that is a path forward. It's not my recommendation at this point to make resolutions or to lock us in on anything, because I don't think we have enough information at this point. I think there's way too many unknowns. And like you said, there's already people who are starting to go that path forward. They are early adopters because they've got the grants. So us trying to act as if we're still trying to be one of those first grant people, we're not, and we're going to be able to learn from what they do. So I think us going forward to be able to do a presentation at the general school committee, and then out of that have conversations, figure out where we want to go from there, is a place that this committee could certainly recommend though.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
Okay, so what I would say is, I don't think, I mean, we don't need any kind of vote here. We just, I think that, I also think that you are by far the most knowledgeable person on this, so I don't think us doing a presentation to this full committee would make sense. I would like to work with the chair and/or Megan to determine when to have you on the next, which next school committee, not the very next one, but whichever, the timing of this, and have you come in and do a presentation to the whole committee and be able to do the full PowerPoint and really put that information out there. I think is going to be the best path forward. And us getting more involved with regional committees that are doing things, similar things, and how we can collaborate together is something that will move this forward.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Okay.
I'm excited. Thank you for the questions.
You're welcome. Thanks for the opportunity, and thank you for the mayor for appointing me to this committee. Not this one, the one I'm.
You can enjoy this one, sweetie.
Take those.
No. I'll eat them. No, I've got it sugared, my downfall.
Thank you.
I promise you.
Bye, John.
Thank you very much, John. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, nice to meet you.
We'll be, we'll be in touch and figure out when the timing will be for that.
All right, sounds good.
Okay.
I guess I'm the star of the show.
You sure are.
All right. I did email this to everybody, but just to, really thank you, John. I did email this to everybody, but just to, to thank you, Joe, for the printed copies. This is the quarter four, which, I mean, it, it really does represent the end-of-the-year report. I mean, like, you know, as I close the year in July, it's like overtime, if you wanna call it that, you know, when you're making your transfers and journal entries and then calculating, you know, where all your grants and revolving accounts are and all that, which, as I said, is yet to be determined, because I just, I don't have all the info from the city yet. I've usually got it, but jeez, a month ago. I think being displaced from the building didn't help the process, but like, I, there's stuff in there I need to complete my end-of-the-year report, which is due in two weeks and two days, so I'm getting a little antsy. I think I'll go downstairs and have a conversation tomorrow. So, anyway, you've seen reports like this before. This is gonna tell a much different story than where we were last year when we had this meeting, where we had a ginormous deficit. At the end of this year, we, we did not, and, you know, that's really thanks to the additional appropriation we received back in April. So, you know, if you look at the original budget column, you'll, that bottom line number there will be a familiar number to you. That's what the city council had originally passed. The second column, the adjusted budget, represents two different things, and not only, like, transfers that were done throughout the year, that's why those numbers are all different, but you'll see the bottom line is $200,000 larger, because that was the appropriation. The year-to-date actual spending column as of June 30th is the third one. You know, the whole thing's not spent, but the column next to it is what was encumbered, most of which would be for summer payroll, which at this time has now been spent. So, the total year-to-date spending, once all the payroll was done, and the few, you know, invoices were out there dangling, you know, bills we hadn't received yet or whatever, but funds that were encumbered, came to a total of $18,63,589.83, which actually left us a balance that will end up getting returned to the city, as I promised.
Let's, before we go there, let, just question that logic. So, let's just keep going, though, with what you're saying, though.
Well, what, what, what's your question there?
Well, that assumption that we're returning it to the city. I don't quite understand that assumption. So, but let's, let's just stay with what the-
Well, it's money that's not going to be spent, is what that is.
But we pulled a lot of our own reserves and put different monies into this, so that's where I just question why that is automatically being said we're giving it back to the city. So, that's, but let's, if we just stay with this, and then we can get to that piece about, I think, I think it's two separate conversations, so.
All right. So, you know, as I said, that's when all was said and done, what was left over, which, you know, is not, I think, common here. I, I think in most ends of years, we're, you know, ended in deficits. Now, you know, maybe as we get to the rest of it, a little bit more, you know, makes sense. So, under notes, the additional appropriation is noted there. That table at the top reflects the operating budget after all the journal entries and things were done in order to close the year. You know, barring any unanticipated bills from last year, which, my knowledge, there's nothing out there, but sometimes things pop up months after the fact, and, you know, that, that's, that happens. Vacant positions and use of school choice money to offset personnel costs allowed for this. So, before we get to where we are on the top there, you know, we did end with, you know, a deficit, but school choice money, as well as, you know, money from, you know, a couple other sources, was budgeted to offset that. So, once that was done, the $25,000, nine, you know, that figure ended up after all that was done. Does that make a little bit more sense, Mayor?
Just say it again? Just, I was trying to write notes, too, so, sorry.
Sure. So, in order to get to the table at the top, the school choice money and the money from our Chapter 71 revolving fund that was budgeted to offset pieces of, you know, our transportation and our, our personnel costs, needed to be applied in order to get to that number, that $25,987.77 figure there. That's what was basically the bottom line after those reclassifications were done, if that makes sense. So, like, when you looked at last year's budget, like, the budget book that Dale had put together, you would've seen that, you know, a number of school choice money was budgeted to offset the budget, a number of circuit breaker money was, you know, budgeted to offset the budget, some money from the bus, you know, past revolving account was budgeted to offset some of that and everything. So, once all that was done, we ended up with the $25,987.0 figure there.
Okay. So, here's what doesn't make sense to me, then, Nick, about this. Maybe that's the place to start. So, we started with the original budget. There was $2 million roughly. The adjusted budget was just shy of 200, $2.5 million, if we're looking at tuition to other districts, right? So, that includes the $200,000 that was added to the city, but also, obviously, other funds that we've added to that line item as well. So, if we've added other line items to that budget, if we put them back and hold them in and don't spend choice money or reserves or other funds, the, the additional $300,000 that was put into that line, then that would help, then that 200, the $25,000, $26,000 would not, would be absorbed in that amount, right? I mean, is that clear?
We'd have to reallocate, right? We'd have to retroactively?
Well, I, what I would've, well, what I then would've had to have done is just use less school choice money to cover what was, you know, what was there as a deficit. The reason why I didn't do that is because when we were at the city council meeting where we got the appropriation, I was specifically asked by the council what would occur if there was money left over, and there's a school committee policy that states it gets returned to the city.
Yeah.
But that's-
But in order to keep it-
But that's not, like, right, but school choice money is us, is ours to allocate where we want, and if we've allocated more than what we, I mean, clearly, we allocated more. If we're ending up with $26,000 in the positive, we could've allocated $26,000 less of school choice money and still had that in our bank account.
Well, the original of the school choice allocation in the budget that Dale had put together was 675, so that, you know, we did allocate less. You know, I, I just, as I said, the city council was, you know, they did ask, they said, what occurs at the end of this, if there's money left over? You know, which, at the time in April, you know, it was hard to determine what's exactly going to be left over, if anything. If you look at, you know, the reclassification summary at the bottom, you'll see the school choice money that was done, that $600,000 figure there, the $267,000 figure there for transportation, that was also a school choice. And, you know, before I did any, and basically what I did is I moved, you know, when I do all my end-of-the-year transfers, I zero out the accounts, you know, because you want your report to have zero and everything at the end of it. But because there was money left over, I moved it all to one place, is what I did. I moved it to the tuition-to-other-districts place, which is why it appears there. The reason why I did that is because we actually had more than the $25,987 left over when I got to, where I got to. So, I did reclassify some tuition to our 240 grant, because I need X amount in the 240 grant to get through the FY '24 budget. So, you know, I, I did move money back off of that in that direction, and I did move a little bit of S R, too, because there was, there was a summer transportation charge last summer that shouldn't have been charged there, and it was, for whatever reason. So, we moved that to our general fund, because we did have some money left over to do that. So, you know, in, in good faith and, you know, judging what, what I needed in the 240 grant to get through next year or this year now, you know, that, that's the figure that was left over, you know, when it was all said and done. And I, you know, I know it looks entirely different than last year. Obviously, we used way more school choice money last year than we budgeted to. It's obviously good that we used less this year, because I think going forward, as the S R money runs out, you know, you're going to see an increase in that, but you can't see an increase in that forever either, because, you know, we, we take in about $700,000 a year there, and for the last few years, we've spent, you know, last year was over a million, or two years ago was over a million. Last year, it was almost $900,000. This year, we budgeted over $900,000, so, I mean, eventually, you know what's gonna happen if you keep spending, you know, more than you're taking in. But, you know, I, I think that is a conversation for budget season, you know, not, not for now.
So, now, let me just ask, are you, so, you're basically asking if the $25,987.77 can be included in some of, of these other columns? And then, the areas that we could have, we would have a surplus in, in those accounts that can roll over to the following year, would that have that, that money in it, instead of returning it to the city?
Yeah, and that's what we've done. I mean, that's, that is how we, you know, if, if we have two different funding sources that go into a line item, and we don't spend all that money, we're not gonna just say, oh, well, all of it's gonna go back to the city. Like, we have, like you're saying, those revolving grants will move forward, and we don't have as much money going into those grant, into those buckets in the future. So, yeah, it seems, I'm sort of surprised that our decision here is to then put this money back to the city.
Well, we have a unique appropriation situation.
That's the, that's the, the piece.
It sounds like, it sounds like you're saying there was more than $25,000.
There was.
You did some reclassification to the point where, like, morally, you felt like this applies for this rollover, this applies for this rollover, and then because the council-
I can give it to this year. Yeah, that's, you know what I mean? I, I've set the sights on it this year.
I'd rather keep it.
But, you know, because the, the city gave us an additional appropriation and specifically asked me what would happen, because, I mean, you know, when I came up with that $200,000 figure, that's off a forecast in March. I mean, it's really hard to determine where you're gonna end up on June 30th in March. So, you know, that was the figure that we landed on, but, but I, you know, I wasn't asked that, and I, you know, I think last year, it was very unique, the school department, I, I don't believe it ever approached the council for an additional appropriation, with the exception, I think a boiler went at one of the elementaries once, and they needed, you know, emergency repair, but with the, except, with that exception, like, that's, it's never happened before, and, you know, I, I think the way it all panned out was, you know, certainly a product of the work that we did last year, meeting with the city council finance committee and kinda, you know, having those couple of meetings where we had conversations so they could kinda understand our, our finances and what we do better. And, you know, over the course of the year, I, I think that there was a good amount of trust that was built between, you know, the, the school department and the city council, and, you know, as I said, I mean, I, I, that's the figure that, you know, when I moved things to make sure we were in a place where we could get through this year, you know, that's what was left over, and, you know, piggybacking on the trust that we built, and the school committee policy does state that, you know, unexpended funds, you know, end up going to the city's free cash. I, you know, I think that, I mean, it's in line with what was said at that city council meeting when we got the appropriation, and I think it, it sets us in a good place going forward if we ever do have to approach them again for something.
We, we don't ever want, I mean, that was such a anomaly.
Oh, I don't want to believe you. I don't want to.
That's not, yeah, I don't, so.
But, things happen.
But do we wanna, would it burn a bridge? And if it does, do we wanna burn it?
You know, things do happen. I mean, there's been, since the summer started, two kids that have been placed in out-of-district placements that were not known, when, you know, even this report was, well, the, the report I think last week, but when these numbers became what they were, that was not unknown.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I understand that we went from the original ask a year and a half ago to the city council, to the mayor, and to the city council was over a half million dollars more than what was, in the end, the mayor actually put forward to city council. Through that process, then, and more information getting to, to March this year, you came up with a $200,000 request, and that's what was put forward to city council and provided. This isn't enough detail to get into the nuts and bolts of our budget to be able to say, you know, additional money could've been shifted to other places, so that it's not us, I mean, we had higher costs than, I don't know, it just, I guess I'm still very surprised that our ultimate choice is to give back to the city 200, you know, $26,000, as opposed to utilizing it within these revolving, you know, funds that would continue forward into this school year.
But I don't think I'm at liberty to do that based on the school committee policy.
Yeah.
Especially because we got the additional appropriation. Like, if, if we never did that, I think we're having a different conversation here.
But we did an adjusted balance, this, this is, this is the one piece of information that you have here, right? Is that we did an adjusted budget where we put half a million dollars additional into And only 200,000 of that came from the city. So, it just seems like that alone is a place where we didn't, so ultimately, we didn't need that high of an adjusted budget, and, so, there's $300,000 additional that we put into that adjusted budget from our own funding, from other funding sources. So, that's, I mean, I-
I mean, that was all end-of-the-year movement, in addition to the additional appropriation. Like, you know, as I said, I, I moved the money all to one place, because I knew I was going to reclassify some money from there to the 240 grant. Like, when you do a reclassification, it's gotta make sense. The 240 grant is a special ed grant, and you're paying mostly tuition and, you know, contracted services with it, so it had to go there. Like, I couldn't, you know, put it in personnel or whatever, right? So, like, you know, a lot of amounts went into that before the reclassification occurred. Like, you know, you're looking at a personnel account with 200 bucks left in it, or you're looking at, you know, some of Larry's maintenance budget, you know, not all that was spent either, because just stuff didn't break, you know?
Yep.
So, you know, it all went there, and then I looked at the 240 grant, what we have left, what we think we're gonna need to spend out of it this year, and I said, you know, I think 75 will get us where we're getting, you know? And then, you know, I looked at circuit breaker as well, but, you know, I ended up with about, I don't know, probably 50,000 more in circuit breaker than I thought I was going to, plus what we get this year for the reimbursements. I'm like, okay, feel better about that. You know, here's where we are. As I said, that this was, it was a complete one-eating from last year. I mean, I'm not completely shocked that there's a lot of questions about this, believe me, I knew that coming into the meeting. But, you know, as I said, it, it kinda all, you know, goes back to that city council meeting when we got the appropriation, and I believe it was Councilor Zaret that asked what, you know, what'll happen at the end if you don't spend it all? I mean, I, I didn't think we'd have this situation in that moment. I thought, well, yeah, we're gonna spend it all and probably done some, but, you know, we just, we had vacant positions. I mean, our assistant IT director position went vacant ever since Justin moved into the director role interim. That was like March through June, so that's four months of pretty good salary there, you know? There was a school psychologist that moved into another role, because somebody resigned. That salary, you know, that was like three months. I mean, there was just, you know, there was vacant positions, there, there was, you know, just maintenance costs that didn't get all spent, and, you know, we just, we didn't spend as much as we thought we were gonna do.
From my perspective, I think that, you know, there's like the two points of, of mind are maintaining trust with the city, you know, giving the money, and, and just whether or not mathematically, we could, we could justify moving it, versus saying appropriations are rare, we don't need to set ourselves up to do that again. I feel like we've made so much progress in the past- in the past two years with the city and the budget, that I'm hesitant to go that route of not returning it and trying to figure out where else we could put it. I would, I mean, I don't know. I feel better about the fact that there was more of a balance, and some of it was reallocating. I think that makes sense. I don't know. That's sort of how I come down on the sort of two sides of that. I know there's a long history of why, well, moving forward, I won't say. You know what I mean? There's a long history there. I get that.
The appropriation is the, that's the fulcrum there, really. If we didn't have that, you know-
We never needed again. We don't want it. We don't, that's how we-
Yeah, it's not, I don't, I don't think this is the conversation that we're having right now. I think the conversation, from my perspective, is we have funding sources from a lot of different places. And it's too late, as you're saying, you're trying to finish up your annual report. So, it's done, what's done is done. I mean, in my, in my mind. So, there's no point in really even going too much further with the conversation. But it does seem like a missed opportunity that, and this, again, this doesn't have enough detail to really talk about it, but, you know, that there are, to give money back to the city at this point seems a missed opportunity, that we did spend money from other sources that then probably didn't have to be spent and could have covered this twenty-six thousand. But neither here nor there at this point, because we need to close up the year. So.
But, I mean, if, you know, say the auditor looked at everything that occurred at the end of, you know, when I do the whole end-of-the-year process, you know, if we, say, spent twenty-six thousand dollars less in school choice money, and then that bottom line there was zero, you know, if the city's ever like, well, I wanna see your end-of-the-year report, I wanna, you know, I wanna see all of this, they would have seen what was left over after what was budgeted was applied to the deficits that we did have. And they're gonna say, well, according to the school committee policies, like, that has to go there. Like, I-
Okay. Yeah, I'm not, I mean, in no way saying that we're supposed to be, we should have been doing things that was breaking policy, or not doing anything that was illegal or mischievous with funding. So, you know, it just seems like we've spent a lot of money from a lot of, and this doesn't have the breakdown of where we spent money from all the different grants, right? So, it has some of that, but not all of it. So-
No, you'll definitely see that in our next meeting, when I have like those final numbers. So, you'll see all the school choice money that was spent. You'll see, because this is just end-of-the-year stuff. There was, you know, a little bit more school choice money spent than that eight-hundred-and-sixty-seven-thousand-dollar figure you would come to if you added the two numbers that are in parentheses there. Like, there was more throughout the year. There's a couple old bills that came up and whatever. There's all the S R grant money we spent largely on salary. The two-forty grant, we spent almost all of that last year. So, I think you're absolutely, excuse me, right in saying, that's not a complete picture. Like, all you're seeing here is basically the journal entries that were done to close the year. You're not seeing all of the spending. And, you know, it was certainly my intention to put all of that on here, but I just didn't have, like, I need to reconcile our ledger with the city's. And there's always discrepancies with grants, because when things, when journal entries occur, they have to occur on both sides, because our anti-deluvian accounting software that we have, like, it does, the two sides don't talk to each other. So, what ends up occurring is Maria, my office manager, will do it on our side, but then she's gotta give something to the city auditor. I don't know what regularity the cycle is that they're updating it on their side either. And even when we move money between, like, you know how I had these things broken into the categories here? These are like the DESI function categories. But if you can picture in your mind our budget book, when I break it up the way the city does, between like personnel and contracted services and that, if I move money from personnel to supplies, or supplies to tuition, or whatever, a journal entry has to be done on their side, not ours. For us, it's a transfer. For them, it's all journal entries. So, there's a lot of room for human error when those things get entered. And so, what ends up happening is, we print out our reports, we get the spreadsheet, the city auditor will give me a big spreadsheet with where we started, our revenue, what we spent, where we are now. Maria and I compare it. There's always some discrepancies. We find them.
Yeah.
You know, it takes a little bit of time. Sometimes it's something we, it could just be a mistype. It could be the auditor didn't do something on her, you know, whatever. We'll find that stuff. But we don't have the sheet yet. Like, we got an initial one. Maria started working on it, gave the auditor some stuff to fix, haven't got the final one yet. So, I don't wanna like report those numbers until I know everything's reconciled. I mean, I can tell you what's in our side for K V S, right, you know, if you really wanted to know, but there may be a couple-
No, we'll deal with that at the end of, end of your report.
Yeah.
You're not ready for that, so that's fine.
At that point. And, you know, you'll see that we, you know, we did spend money from all of our other funding sources in order to, you know, to cover our costs.
Yep. Okay. Okay. So, yeah, we'll just let it be for there. Anything else that you wanted to report out on then?
Just that negative three-hundred-and-thirty-dollar payroll from last night.
Yeah.
Yeah, I didn't know what that was, so it's, we didn't vote on it. I did talk to the payroll person today. It's not anything that affected our accounts at all. What it was, was we had an employee last year that we found out was being paid a step higher than they should have been. Which, you know, we talked to the employee, we figured out an agreement, like, there was, we didn't have to claw even back-
Yeah.
-because we caught it in June before all the summer payrolls were done. I mean, obviously, you know, that was, that was the process. You can imagine the employee wasn't happy about it. And neither were we. I mean, we strive to be a hundred percent accurate all the time. But anyway, that's neither here nor there now. But in, you know, we figured out, like, okay, this is how much we've overpaid you. So, we adjusted her remaining summer pays in order so that, at the end of it, it would be what she should have earned for the year, so there didn't have to be any clawback and nothing crossed the fiscal year. In doing so, in making that agreement, she asked, she'd originally wanted the four summer pays, but she asked if she could have her adjusted pay in a lump sum instead, which normally, they need to give us like months' notice. But I said, yeah, absolutely. I, you know, I mean, we, on our end, we overpaid you. I'm perfectly happy to make an exception now if you'd rather it be in a lump sum. You know, we did this in conjunction with the E E A, myself and the educator, we talked. It was, you know, it all ended up okay. But what ended up happening is because, you know, of the way she was paid, she didn't pay enough insurance to the city. So, what that negative three-hundred-and-thirty dollars was, was the city basically clawing back money from her to cover the insurance. So, it was, it was one of her deductions. It wasn't any part of her, like, net pay. So, it didn't affect our accounts at all. That's probably why I was never sent anything on it. But it's good to go for the next school committee meeting.
Okay. Sounds good.
Do you want me to email that to the entire committee, so it ends up on the next agenda? I just don't want it to get-
Oh, it just needs to be put back on the agenda, and we'll just, we can clarify-
It'll be suspended, so it should. And you'll always have a spot to do an update, so.
Yeah.
Okay. I just wanna, you know, it'll, Sue needs to be C T'd on it, so it ends up on the agenda. Just wanna make sure it doesn't-
Well, Sue's not here for the next month, so I don't think that's gonna be the critical piece, so.
C T or, okay, well, I don't know. I guess me and Cindy right now.
Yeah. Okay. Anything else?
I don't have anything else.
Okay. So, in terms of next meeting, we do need to come back and do a end-of-year once it's actually done. So, looking at, I know that, I know you have a deadline of the thirtieth, right?
Oh, yeah. Whether I'm gonna meet that or not at this point?
Yeah, no, I understand. So, I mean, it seems like maybe we need to have something, what, early November to sort of do a final meeting?
That's what we did last year. We did our final meeting and Q one for, which I think we can do that again if you're amenable to it.
Yeah.
Because, I mean, Q one's pretty easy, you know, it's not a ton of, not a ton of movements occurred yet. And then, you know, after that, it's when I start looking at stuff and preparing transfers for the committee to do, just to clean up stuff based on new hires and people that have left. Same kind of thing we did last year, which, you know, ended up working out, honestly, just at the end of the year. You know, I didn't have a ton of payroll accounts in deficit or anything like that. It was, it was clean.
Yep. So, if we're looking at a, find another meeting, you were the one that had the most challenges that are making-
As far out, though, it should be good, November.
So, what day of the week can you sort of do then?
Are you looking at like the sixth through the tenth?
Yeah, because our committee meeting is the fourteenth, is that right?
Yes.
Yes.
So, yeah, if we hit it at the sixth to the tenth, then?
Really only Thursday night would be somewhat challenging, even that would be possible. But I can do anything that week.
Okay. Can we do a Monday, six P M.?
November sixth.
On the sixth, at what time can we do it? Can we do?
Five or six.
I'm good with five, if I just keep it consistent.
Okay. Yeah, we'll do five P M. Okay, sounds good. I'll take a motion to adjourn then.
I make a motion. Can I second my own?
Can I second that?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.